We're just about there.
We're now streaming live on Facebook, it says.
There we go.
Yeah, there goes mine.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello, David.
Going to go ahead and we're going to get started into our committee. Actually, we only have one first reading, no second, third, or pending. And it's ordinance number 21-0-01. Ms. Norris?
You did, Andrew.
You're muted, Andrea.
Thank you. We'll bring our committee to order at 6:01. I'm counting. It looks like all members are present. The item is 21001. An ordinance to increase the salary of Mayor of New Franklin to $90,000 per year. This sponsor, Jim Cotts and Andrew Fetterman.
So I'll jump in before Jim does. And I just want to start off by saying first that this was completely unsolicited. It's just an overdue item that we need to take care of, in my opinion. The mayor's salary has not gone up since we became a city. And everyone else, every other employee within the city has increased every year, so or thereabouts anyhow, but I think that's something that's very overdue and that is needed. And again, it wouldn't go into effect until the next term. So January 1 of 2022. Jim?
There. So again, you can't see me, but I'm here. The camera's not working on my computer. We we've been talking about this for a little while, and we only have the opportunity to do this every four years. And it has to be done at this time of year, has to be approved by council 45 days before the petitions for the position are due, which be about the middle beginning of June. So we need to pass this by our, I believe by our second meeting of April. So we have plenty of time to take time on this to if anybody wants to take time and solicit any input from the community. I, the salary of 90,000 a year is kind of possibly like a starting point. Put something in there for us to think about, but I think it's a good starting point. It's still lower than the mayors of Barberton and Green, just as a reference, and obviously lower than the city of Akron. But looking at it from the beginning, at 72,000, if the position were to receive a a 1% increase every year from the beginning, it would be, right now, would be right around 90,000. And if it was a 1.5% increase each year, it'd be well over 90,000. So that's where the 90,000 came in. I think it's a good number. I think it's a good starting point for us to discuss. As Andy mentioned, there has not been an increase in this position since the beginning of time for the city of New Franklin, and as he stated, is overdue. And then you can look at the job that Mayor Adamson has done for us and for the city in that position, the amount of time and hours and stress that goes into the position. He certainly has done his part of this, and and I feel very, very comfortable with him being our mayor, very comfortable with the job he has done. And every, all the work that he has gone in, especially this past year with the COVID, and putting forth all the effort to to make sure we're getting what we can get and doing the research. And we look at other things that he's been involved with, with the Tudor House. And, you know, we have issues going on with it now with the, with possible management and stuff. But over the last few years and putting that the Tudor House in position to be at least breaking even, if not making money, and then then trying to, working with the commission to try to come up with activities and events to go on at the Tudor House along with the weddings, the bridges that we've had issues with, whether it's in our city or not, whether it's an emergency situation that had to be taken care of because the rain washed it out and getting things done and making a phone calls and knowing who to talk to and get it done. So again, I'm trying not to be a cheerleader, but I think this is, as Mr. Fetterman said, is overdue. We need to look at it and we need to act on it. So there you go.
All right. I guess the only concern I have, and I agree, if we were giving Paul this raise, I would agree, but of course, we all know we have to get it done before the election of our mayor, and it very well could be Paul. But it could be somebody else that has no experience, and we all know how elections go. They could have no experience whatsoever, and we throw them in there, and we're going to give them, we're going to give them an $18,000 raise from where we're at currently with possibly no experience. Again, if we're giving it to Paul, I'm all for it, but I'm hesitant. And I know it's a double edged sword because we don't know. It could very well be Paul. And it could not be Paul. So, you know, you'd have to feel comfortable with who might be the next mayor, being maybe somebody that's never even held office, because there's no requirements on running for mayor. You know, it could be somebody that went out there and ran and gets it and has no idea how to run this city. So we would be giving them $90,000. I mean, it's a tough decision for me, even though Paul deserves it. If I knew he was going to be our mayor, but we don't know that. That's just my opinion on it.
Well, and I certainly appreciate your opinion there. And unfortunately, one of the situations we have is the only time we can, as I understand it, the only time we can present for an increase in the salary is during an election year for the next term. So we will never know who the, who the mayor is, and so I guess to a degree, we just have to look at the position and the experience that we've had with that position and and trust that the person that comes in will be as, hopefully as dedicated as the previous mayor, whoever that is at whichever time. So we'll always have that, I guess, fear of increasing salary for somebody that we don't know who's going to be in that position, unfortunately.
Yeah, and I understand that, but, you know, I've heard a lot of talk through the years when we were giving raises to our office people, and it should be on what they do. You know, how they perform. It should be a performance based raises. And I know this doesn't fit that situation, but it's, that's an $18,000 raise to, for the unknown. And I get that we have to do it, and I understand all that, and I would hope that Paul would be our next mayor, but you know, it's going to be one of those things. I just, it's, I know that's the only time we can do it, but it's, I mean, I don't know how you get around not doing it, but that's just the concerns I have.
Mr. Stock, I completely agree with you. I just want to say, I completely agree with you, Mr. Stock. And unfortunately, our charter is written in such a way that we don't have the opportunity to do performance evaluations for for elected officials. And 18,000 a year, yeah, yes, that's a huge jump. I get that also, but it's been, how many years since the position was created? So it's one thing if we did it after the first opportunity we had, you know, 15, 16 years ago, whatever. No, it wouldn't be an $18,000 increase. But it's been 20 years. So, yeah, it's a huge jump, and I get that, and I was uncomfortable too. But again, this is, this is a number for us to talk about it. You know, maybe it's not 90,000. Maybe we amend it to where it's 150,000, or maybe we amend it to where it's 80,000, or whatever number. And I'm sorry to cut you off, Ms. Jones, please go ahead.
That's okay. I agree with David on this. I think this is something that's very scary, and probably Paul's a little embarrassed when he looks at that number, because he knows as well as anybody how dire the economics are right now. But I do think it would behoove us to talk with the area citizens and get their input on it. Because I'm going to tell you honestly, I think they're going to have a lot to say, because we have a lot of people that have lost their jobs. They've taken pay decreases, and if I remember last meeting, we had discussions about giving Susan Cook, who I think is excellent at her job, payment for overtime she put in. And there were three of us, I believe, that voted against that, because we didn't think it was fair to say that when you're a salaried person, that for overtime work, you need to be compensated. And if I remember correctly, you were one of those, Jim.
And I was, and I still believe that, but this is, this is apples and oranges, I believe.
I don't. I look at it the same way. I think Paul does a terrific job.
Well, this isn't, I mean, this isn't being compensated for any overtime. This is just catching up. I mean, even if we would do a percentage, incremental percentages, you know, over the next however many years, or write that in. I mean, the fact that there's three employees below that report to the mayor that are, you know, have a higher salary than his, and that's, you know, I mean, we voted for that. And I think that, I don't know, I mean, obviously, we have time for discussion and to ask everybody and get some input. And I'm not opposed to, you know, like Jim said, 90 is arbitrary number. You got to start somewhere.
I agree. I mean, I, I'm not against it. I just got to get my head wrapped around it a little bit more on, you know, where we stand on that. You know, I don't know if there's, I don't even know if it's possible that if there, and I guess we'd have to check with our law director of the charter if there could be an increase after two years, or, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not sure how that would work. I don't know if that's possible. You know, you got a starting, and then after two years, I mean, that could be, if that was out front of the election, and somebody that was running would know that, that's how it worked. I'm not sure that's even possible, but at least it's a different starting point, or just a comment, I should say.
And it's one of the reasons why we're introducing it now, because we have until the second meeting of April to to do something with this. So it gives us plenty of time to talk about it. It gives us plenty of time to get input from the citizens as far as how they feel and what type of number they feel comfortable with. So I will say that I post the agenda on Facebook when it comes out for us, and usually we're getting comments right away from people about different things that are posted. There was no comments from this posting of the agenda, which really kind of surprised and shocked me. We did get one email from a citizen asking, basically asking the same questions that y'all are. And they're very valid questions. I agree. That's, but again, that's why it's out here now, so that everybody has an opportunity to talk about it, ask questions, negotiate, you know, figure out what we want to do, if we want to do anything. So.
Okay, I think that with all those comments being said, David, we're going to go ahead and keep this on time. We're not going to ask for any first reading. This merits a little bit more discussion and a little bit of public input.
Yeah, I agree, Andrea.
So we're going to do that with our committee. Any other comments, other suggestions? I think that's the way to go for now.
I agree.
With that, our committee will conclude at 6:14. Thank you. Appreciate the conversation.
Thank you, Andrea. All right. Again, there's no other legislation this evening. Anybody have anything they want to bring up during their committee?
I do, David, if you don't mind.
No.
I have. I have a couple of questions that I have gotten from, just residents asked me, and I don't have an answer. When they run the gas and the water lines on Manchester Road, I got the impression, and it could have just been an impression, that those run together. Now, is there a set space between the two? Normally, when you're putting in lines, there is a set space. As a contractor, you would know that. So I'm sure that's probably true with the
Judy, I'm not a contractor. That's been said. I am not a contractor. I'm just a carpenter.
Speak to that.
But Andy, Andy's in business.
Okay, now when they run the gas lines and the water lines and the sewer lines, isn't there a set limit between those, Andy?
Yes, so the water and sewer have to be opposite sides of the road. Gas will have to be in its own right of way, separated. You know, there's separation in between each utility. Every now and then communications can go in a foot above power if it's underground. But other than that, yeah, every utility is going to have a separation.
So actually, septic would go on one side? Or would
Sewer and water have to be separate.
I'm sorry, I said septic. Sewer would go on one side, and water would go on the other side of the road?
And if I can speak to that one for a second, that is the norm. The standard is 10 feet.
Okay.
So the sewer, and I'm speaking, this is what I've been told, but we had some pretty intense conversations about 10 days ago with Summit County Sanitary Sewer and the guys from Aqua. We had ODNR in there as well, and us, and the engineers for the city, anyway. There was a bit, it was nine of us, so we were safe. Everybody had masks on. Anyway, the upshot from the experts is this, that the sewer, the water and stormwater, they have to be 10 feet apart. And to achieve that, as Mr. Fetterman said, normally sewer goes on one side of the street and water goes on the other side of the street. This is what I understand is the practice, but they can be on the same side of the street as long as they're 10 feet apart. And in fact, we're going to have one circumstance like that on State Route 93. When the water comes up Renninger to 93, when it goes north, it'll be on the east side. And there are dry lines for the sewer already on the west side from Vanderhoof up to about Renninger. And they're going to continue when they do get around to the sewer, and they'll stay on the, on the west side. The water, Aqua wanted to put theirs on that side also because apparently there were a number of obstacles on the east side. And so they're going to cross over, and they're going to be on the west side also, but they're going to be the requisite 10 feet apart, and all of that has to, when the sewer and water, that all has to be approved by the highway PA. So we have, you know, so that's, that's under their jurisdiction and their authority. And, but now I totally defer to Mr. Fetterman. When it comes to the gas lines and those things, I don't know the answer on that one.
Yeah, I don't know how far they have to be away from water or sewer. As far as communication, since we power could be transferred on there, we have to have, I believe, a minimum of 36 to 48 inches in between.
Okay, gentlemen, then let me ask you. Are you saying they can be 10 feet apart? One is, say, five feet down, and the other is 15 feet down, or side by side, 10 feet apart?
Yeah, lateral, side by side.
So they would be going into the property at least 15 feet?
Well, they, at least these plans are both drawn that they would stay within the road right of way. So that the road right of way extends far enough on the west side that they can both be in the road right of way and still be 10 feet apart. And not have to appropriate any property from the landowners on that stretch.
Okay. And how far is that from the middle? From the middle line? Do you remember?
I don't know the answer on that one. It's different on every street, but it's, yeah, so that's, on that state route, I'm going to guess it's pretty extensive, but I don't know the answer for sure.
How about homeowners? It would be the same for homeowners. You're not going to encroach upon lawns and things. You're just going to stay within the road right of way?
They'll stay in the road right of way. Where there's, where you run into some conflicts is when the homeowner has basically utilized the road right of way. Like most homeowners do, including me.
Yes.
My lawn runs right to the, right up to the street. But I think that road right of way out there is something like 20 feet. So there's about 10 feet of what I think is my lawn is the city's road right of way.
That's what I was asking, Paul. And would the company doing the work repair that the way it was? Or is that up to the homeowner? Because basically, it's the road right of way.
The contract we have with Aqua is that they are, that they're required to repair, to restore to the best of their ability to the condition. And I'm glad that came up, because we had, we got an inquiry from a gentleman on Catalina. There's been some heavy equipment over there, and he's had some, and I guess, Mr. Cotts, this is my kind of lazy way of responding to that. I just saw it this afternoon. But, yeah, they have an obligation to restore to the best of their ability to the condition that existed. When you get to lawns and those kind of things, I suppose that's primarily going to be planning. You know, of more concern to a lot of people is concrete. You know, if they got a concrete drive, and they're going to have to restore these.
Well, and they're trying to go underneath.
With them, and hopefully, you know, we're not going to have to fight about it. I don't expect that we will, since we're just getting started with these folks.
Okay.
But again, I'm sorry, Judy. I'm sorry. Please say that again, then I want to say one more thing. I talked over
They were restored to the best of their ability.
Yeah, as close, as close as they can to the condition that existed before the construction. But it's going to take a while to do that naturally. They're going to have to finish the construction before, so I think what we're going to see, we're going to see them leave the area. And people say, wait a minute, what about my yard? And, but, you know, it's March, you know, and they really can't do much right this minute. So I think some of this stuff is going to follow. I will tell you that the city will be a vigorous advocate for any property owner who feels that they didn't get proper restoration. They can, people can count on that.
And I think with the heavy equipment, they are going to get some damage, as you say, because it's March, and we get a lot of mud. The heavy equipment will really be, do a lot of damage. But I notice they're trying to go under the driveways, and in most instances, they're able to do that without any damage to the driveway.
Right. And that makes business sense for them, naturally.
It does, honestly. And I have one more question. It may be for Susan. I'm not positive. I thought we were going to put the budget on the website. Is that something we can do?
We have basically never put the budget on the website. We've had it on our our open checkbooks. Once we update it, we've had the budgets on there. Um, we can do it. It's no big deal. After we get, after you pass it, we can certainly put it up there. It's not a problem.
That way, people could follow it. People that don't watch the meetings and probably do not copy down very quickly the things we're saying, and sometimes we don't go over the whole thing. I know you do a very good job, and I'm not saying that, but if that wouldn't be an inconvenience, I think if the other council members are in agreement, I think it might be a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. Anything that we can put online is going to be helpful.
All right. Anybody else?
And while we're talking about putting things online, if you don't mind me buttoning it, there was a inquiry that came across this afternoon that we have been posting the agenda on the website and on Facebook, but we haven't posted the individual resolutions themselves. And that's a good question. That's the first time anybody's asked, because if we were in person, they'd be able to look at them. And they don't have them here. So I already talked to Katie Smith, and beginning with next week, or with our next meeting, we will post in advance, not just the agenda, but we'll also post the resolutions as well, so people can take a look at them and see them if they got specific questions. Whether or not we're going to get into all the attachments on them, it will remain to be seen. If we got something with 30 pages, I don't know if we're going to throw all that on there. You know, if somebody wants to see it, they can give us a call or something like that. But, you know, if it's a proposal, and, you know, it's attached as a quote, of course, we'll put that stuff on. But the, but the resolutions and the ordinances themselves, we'll make sure those are all posted with the agenda, starting with the next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Anyone else? All right. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the City of New Franklin City Council meeting Wednesday, March 3, 2021. We'll call it 6:25. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. We get a roll call, please.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Tell them something, goodness.
What?
I don't know what that was. It wasn't me. Something going, something going on. All right. I'm going to go ahead and make a move, a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of February 17, 2021. You got a second? Any discussion, comments on the minutes?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
You were not at the last meeting, so you would need to abstain.
Oh, okay.
So I need, I need a second.
Second, second.
Thank you.
We got a first, a second. Thank you, Kelly. Roll call, please. Was there any discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That passes six to zero with one abstention. We'll go onto the comments. We do have just a couple. We have one that says salaried positions in the private sector do not typically pay overtime. If the salary for the mayor has not increased in 20 years, then it's overdue. And another one said, hey, Jim, a few of us did comment. I'm guessing that's going back to when you put it on the website. So that was just a comment. And then we got one something, then the city should maintain the road wide right away. That's always been an issue. Okay, we have another comment. Now that the governor is allowing mass gatherings with proper social distancing, will you return, or are you returning to person, in-person meetings? And I guess I talked to Paul about that today. Paul, you just want to touch on that real quick?
Yeah, we haven't gotten a clearance on that specific issue. They've increased the numbers for social gatherings, for festivals, for weddings, but not necessarily, not for public meetings. So I will continue to monitor that. And I really, really look forward to the day we're back out in the big room. But as of right now, all the information I have was, we're still stuck with the, with the 10-person limitation.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Another one is, how long will Aqua guarantee their work digging on their driveway will cause voids and settling over time, causing concrete drives to settle and crack? I believe they, Andy, you probably can help me. If they push that through there, right? They usually don't excavate under a driveway. On a smaller pipe, they just push them through, right? So.
I don't know what they're doing, but I know as far as my company, yeah, we bore, it's directional bore, so there's no void.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that, I know that's what they do with smaller water line. I'm not sure what their main water line is, but I know they can do up to a pretty good sized hole where they're they're not actually excavating under there. They're just boring a hole and sticking a pipe to fill that void, so. But that's a question. How long will they guarantee their work, Paul?
Well, I mean, they've got an obligation to restore, so as long as we got a contract with them, I'm confident we'll be able to get their cooperation if there's deterioration down the road.
There's, there's quite a few driveways on Catalina where they've, they've taken the driveway out, the apron out to install the piping. So there, almost every driveway has been affected on Catalina.
All right. There we go. All right. That's all I see for now. All righty then. We're going to go ahead and, again, we just had the one first reading, no second, third, or pending. First reading of ordinance number 21-0-01, Kelly.
An ordinance to increase the salary of Mayor of New Franklin to 90,000 per year effective January 1, 2022. Thank you, Kelly. David, we discussed this during the committee meetings, and it warrants further discussion from the public, a little bit more meaningful discussion perhaps among us. It's not about Paul. It's about having not done this for 20 years. Unfortunately, now that you do it, there's nothing that's been put into the legislative structure to allow for these increases yearly, which is maybe something we really should be considering. We're going to go ahead and keep that on time and explore this a little bit more.
All right, time request.
Paul, you're awesome. I think you're doing a great job. I have consistently been somebody that's spoken about your achievements and the hard work that you've done for the city, not only in these meetings, but outside these meetings. Anytime I get, I always applaud your efforts. I think you're doing a great job.
I'm trying. Thank you.
I agree, Andrea. Thank you. Time requested. Time is granted.
Thank you.
Again, no second, third, or pending. Moving into our favorite part of the meeting, which is the mayor's report.
All right, there we go. We talked about Aqua, and it's moving forward. I had a meeting with the city of Green today because the water originates over by Giuseppe's. It has to come up east castin to to South Main, and it has to go south to West Castin. And that's a busy intersection, and there's a lot going on there. And that's how we ended up having this conversation that I was referring to with Summit Uh, and that's how we ended up having this conversation uh, that I was referring to with some county sanitary sewers. Because uh, well, in any event, uh, they are gonna, it's, uh, they're gonna need to close South Main for about five days. It'll be, it'll be a work week. It'll be sometime in, in uh, probably mid-April. Uh, I know, and we will, not much they can do about it, uh, because they have to come around that corner and they have to. Uh, there, there's just a lot going on in that intersection. So nobody really wants to, but they're gonna have to. It's been done a few times before. Uh, the feeling is if we get plenty of early notice out on it, people are gonna be inconvenienced. Uh, but fortunately, it's a. Uh, you know, there's nothing we can do about it. I'm just giving you an early heads up on it. Uh, that, to my knowledge, is the only. Road closure situation that we're gonna look at during this uh, construction process. We uh, put something out on our daily post a couple of days ago. Uh, we've had some recent success with grants. And if people didn't look at that, uh, I just wanted to let the public know that we've been hustling after grants anywhere we can get them. Uh, and uh, three of them that we're happy to report, uh, the justice grant for police radios came in. Uh, and that's in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, and I think we asked for seven, they're paying for four. Um, but we, that's almost fifteen thousand dollars in grant money for those radios. The city share is fourteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Next. We uh, there is a, I'm looking over to my left and there's this big. Uh, study that was done on the uh, Ohio and Erie Canal Way uh, connector. This has been discussed for a number of years. Of somehow connecting Nimasilla and the nice walking path they have in Nimasilla. With the Portage Lake State Park and then also connecting the Portage Lake State Park with the Ohio uh, and Erie Canal Way. Uh, and uh, to maximize the access uh, to that, to that trailway. So that study was done numerous years ago. It's a very expensive proposition to try to do all of it. We took a look at it and said, uh. You know, maybe this is a good time to look at uh, at the, the portion of it that would take it from the state park. To the uh, to the Erie Canal, to the uh, Canal Way and uh, towpath. And uh, and we, the reason we, it actually started looking at it because the sewer, when the sewer comes, they're gonna be, they're gonna be off the road right away. Uh, and they're gonna be doing some, some digging. And so when they restore, maybe that could be restored as an all-purpose path. Uh, and would really defer, you know, a lot of the expense. So what, the first thing that we need to do is update this study from an engineering standpoint. And we talked to our people, GPD, and, and we, we got a rough idea of what it might cost. Uh, and so we, we uh, applied for a grant. For those uh, for a trail study. Uh, update on the towpath connector uh, study. And uh, we were advised on February twenty-second, we were a successful applicant, fifteen thousand dollars. So uh, yeah, and the, and the beauty of that is, and we've talked with the Ohio and Erie Canal Way Association people. And uh, oftentimes this is a sequential process that if they fund your study. Uh, then that gives you points and puts you in, it, it, it gives you an advantage when you come back and say, okay, now we'd like to do it and we'd like some funding for the project itself. And the fact that they funded the study gives you a leg up and, and getting the funding for the project. So um, that's something that we've been working on for a while and we got that. And uh, we're very happy about that. And lastly, um, Katie Smith, she's always embarrassed when I mention her, but uh. She uh, took the lead at the Tudor House. And I'm gonna talk about the Tudor House in just a minute. But anything that needs to be done to structurally maintain the Tudor House. And, and I will tell you, there's, there's not an iota of a plan to change anything about the interior of the Tudor House. The entire plan for the Tudor House is to maintain the period piece that it is. But we found out things like, we had a leak in the uh, in the butler's kitchen. Or the butler's pantry, I don't know what you call it, but anyway, there was a leak in the ceiling and it was coming from a toilet. And this was last fall or last summer. And uh, they dug it up and they, there was no plans. They have no blue, no blueprints for this. Uh, and when they cut it open, they found out that the floor in the upstairs bathroom is concrete, pretty thick concrete. Uh, and then when you start seeing the pipes, it's a little scary. And I will tell you as an aside, it's plenty scary, you know, when I saw that, when I thought about. What we might run into, what the city might run into for maintenance expenses. Uh, you know, under the floors and behind the walls up there, because it was what, maybe two years ago, we had the, the ceiling in the bridesroom. Giveaway. And we had to bring people in to fix that. So anyway, but there's no blueprints. Uh, and uh, so we made that, we uh, reached out to uh. Uh, the, the folks at Stan Hewitt, who uh, who, I should let Katie do it, but I'm not gonna. Uh, it, because it, it, so who, who uh, understand old structures and blueprints, et cetera. They said, before we get, what you guys need are blueprints. Uh, and we said, well, uh, you know, how are we gonna get that done? Uh, and so Katie actually submitted the grant on our behalf to the Ohio History Connection. And we were one of uh, I think we were one of what, eighteen or? Yeah, we were one of fourteen that received a grant, in this case, just under five thousand dollars. To assist us then in, in creating the, recreating the blueprints for, for the Tudor House. So uh. All told, uh, it was a uh, about thirty-five thousand dollars in grants that came in. So. It's a lot of hard work and it's very much appreciated by the, by all the folks that made that happen. The Cogle Road Bridge. Here's the latest. There was, um, when we last spoke, there were discussions going on with the, with AMATS. It's such a complicated deal that, that if the, if the semi-county engineer applied to AMATS for, for the money, AMATS had the money. Uh, but the engineer had to apply. Uh, and then Norton was talking about trying to make up the balance. Uh, and all of this was the idea to try to get this done this year. And so that's where we were the last time I talked to you. Two things happened actually today. Uh, one of them, I'll call it up on it in advance of this meeting. Uh, the AMATS thing is, is not moving as quickly as anybody would like it to. Um, the, the engineer has, this is all secondhand, so I don't want to speak for the engineer, but I'm advised that the engineer has a number of projects they want to apply for AMATS funding. And if they, you know, and they, they're prioritizing at their end. And this may not be a high priority item, so maybe they don't want to push this one through AMAT. So. I, I was prepared for that possibility, and if that happens, we're just gonna pound the county more and pound Norton. But meanwhile. We uh, we're in touch today. I had two phone conversations today with Senator, uh, State Senator Christina Roder. And she is our state senator. She also happens to be the chair of the Senate Finance Committee. Which is a, and, and the capital budget is, is in the process of being reviewed and, and approved. Uh, and the final approval will come by the end of this month. Uh, and uh, we talked to her today about the Cogle Road Bridge. And she hadn't, she was interested. Uh, and, and had a uh, uh, and so I spoke to her at the end of the day and. She has committed to make a request in the budget for two hundred thousand dollars for that project. And yeah, which would cover, I think, most of that project. Norton has some ideas. There's gonna be some development on Eastern Road, which is gonna be a really good thing for us, because we need that anyway. Uh, but, and, and so they want to do a little bit more than just the bridge. I'm thrilled with that. But all I really care about right now is the bridge. So uh, the short of it is, she is, she's made, she's including that in the, in their application for the budget. And we'll know by March thirty-first. And if it's approved, then that money's available. And I followed up then with uh, with uh, Norton, the representative from Norton, uh, and said, if that money comes in. Is, is this bridge gonna be done this summer? And the answer was yes. So um, we're hopeful. All right, um, the, the Tudor House, uh, I, I sent everybody a copy of the proposal. Uh, as you know, we, we advertised multiple, multiple places. Uh, and we had, we had one proposal from the same individual who had the original interest. Uh, and uh, and i- if you've had a chance to look at the proposal, good. And if you haven't, what you'll see is. Uh, very similar to what, kind of what we asked for. A willingness to, to take over the house, take over the maintenance of the house. In terms of development of the grounds, take over the bookings and be responsible for all that. In terms of development of the grounds. Uh, the proposal is, you know, one time we talked about a structure down by the lake, but then we had some pushback on that. People weren't too crazy about that idea. Uh, so the proposal, as you, as you probably saw. Uh, it is, would be in two phases. The first phase would involve the landscaping. And that landscaping would include. Uh, patios uh, on the lake side of the house, patios at the north entranceway and lakefront patios. Uh, and also some, some work on the waterfront down there. The uh, work on the driveway to create a circular driveway, installation of a permanent outdoor restroom on the facility. The uh, the, I've had some extensive conversations with the individual, well, Tim Cantor, who, who made the proposal. Uh, and they expect that, uh, that phase to cost in the range of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the construction on that would begin. Uh, they, they would do the design work during the year and they would look to start the construction at the end of this, i- this fall. And be done by next spring with that phase of it. Uh, they would run the wedding season through twenty twenty-two. Uh, they would use tents as we've used tents. Uh, and then the second phase would be the season room. With the idea that the construction on that would start in the fall, early winter of twenty twenty-two. And that structure would be ready by the spring, uh, the red wedding season of twenty twenty-three, two years from now. And it, when, if you look at that, at those plans, what really attractive about that house, and the house would go to the north side of the. Uh, of the grounds. Uh, so there's no site issues. It's, it's, he's, the plans included two-story structure and the, and the top floor would have walkouts, uh, lakefront walkouts. Uh, and that's great, because they'll be able to do their weddings and events up there. The, 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 the ground floor, I'm even more excited about, quite frankly, because they have some storage areas in there, but there's two meeting rooms in there. Uh, and, and I, you know, that's been, that's an important aspect for me in terms of how the city can have an opportunity to use that facility. The uh, so we are in the process, and that, that part of the process, project, they expect to cost somewhere between one and a half to two million dollars to, to build that building. There was a question, I talked to our Parks Commission about this the other day, and they had a question of, well, how do we control the events they have and, and how are they gonna pay for this and? And uh, is he gonna have to start running all kinds of different events to, to pay the bills? Uh, and, and the, the financing, it's private financing. You should, you know, you shared some details with me. They will not have any debt service uh, to answer to for the, until the third year. So that's how they're, that's, that's how they're, how they, that's the business plan. And what'll eventually happen is, you know, we try to book weddings out there. I don't know, we booked anything, quite frankly, the longer I look at the place, to be honest with you. But you know, if you book a wedding out there and you pay the fifteen hundred dollars for the house, which used to be seven fifty, uh, and then you got a tent. Uh, and in the tent, you know, they would come and put the tables up, but if you wanted tables anywhere else, you wanted your chairs, you had to come, you had to take them out of the garage, drag them up, set them up. At the end of it, you gotta take them down. I know that happens at certain places, but that's how you, that's how you run it for fifteen hundred. That's how we ended up with, you know, with uh. Those are the, the folks we got. They'll do it a little bit more upscale. Uh, and I think, apparently their business plan essentially feels that they'll be able to uh, have rentals that'll sustain it. We had, uh, so I'm working on the contract, we're working on the contract right now. And I hope to have that contract to present to you for a first reading on March seventeenth. And I will tell you that the operative parts. They would take over the obligation of the bookings. They would, they would run them. They would service them. The uh, uh, they take over the maintenance of the house as soon as we sign the contract. Their plan is, we, we met over there with the House Committee. We got subcommittees of the Tudor House Commission now, because we've had such good response. And, and we met with him, the House Committee met last Friday with him, and we went kind of room to room. Uh, and, and Tim indicated they'll probably spend about seventy-five or eighty-five thousand dollars this year in the house. Just doing fundamental stuff. Couple of the bathrooms are a nightmare. You've been over there, you know that. Uh, what passes for a groom's room in the basement is scary. Uh, you, you know, there's, there's just a, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's very expensive. And, and I'm sorry to go on this long, but I really want to let people understand why I, I, I feel so strongly about this. These are things, when we've, when we expanded the Tudor House Committee, Commission, and we created these separate committees. And Andrea can speak to that. Her and her mom came in and did some fabulous stuff in one of the rooms. Uh, we took a look and we said, okay, we're gonna do this piece by piece. And we look at the kitchen and we spent some money, we had a lot of donated labor and we upgraded that kitchen. But when you start getting into some of the other rooms and some of the things that need to be done. I mean, it's five thousand here, ten thousand here, fifteen thousand here. Uh, and then you, you know, it, it was very, very, very daunting. Uh, a- a- and then you're gonna take the small administrative staff that we have and say, okay, to pay for this, we're really gonna have to do more stuff. We gotta get corporate events in here. We gotta get, you know. And all of a sudden, we're trying to run an event center, uh, and you know, with, with no manpower. Uh, and we still don't have anybody to put up tables and take them down. So uh, this, there isn't, so the contract is such. That, that we preserve the dates, we preserve our five uh, major event dates, we preserve bi-weekly summer events. And we have the right to the facility at any time that it's not booked. And that at any time that it's not booked, it remains open as a public park place. Uh, and we, this is gonna be a management agreement. There's no proprietary interest. We, we retain the full proprietary interest in the grounds. So uh, that's, that's most of the high points on it. I will, uh, I will get this to you uh, in advance of the meeting. And uh, and we, I intend to have it, and we gotta, I think we'll have it hammered out in time to have it to you for at least a first reading uh, on March seventeenth. I know I was really kind of long-winded on that one. Have you made any questions or thoughts or concerns or comments on that one?
I do, Paul. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This reminds me, Mason Manor, this was the reason we did not take Mason Manor. We couldn't afford it. I remember we had, I think, a bat incident.
Right.
And that was just one incident.
Yeah.
This is, that's the reason we did not, that we don't have Mason Manor.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, all right. Uh, just a couple of other things. Quickly, we are proceeding on, on uh, exploring tennis courts at Sizzler. We've, I've talked with Manchester Schools, uh, they will, um, they'll donate the land to us. We're doing the survey right now. Uh, we're talking with you, uh, United States Tennis Association. They're gonna help us with the planning. Uh, we will, Kevin Noble's working on this. We're gonna put out requests for proposals for construction. Uh, and uh, as soon as we are in a position to do that, which we hope will be. Uh, we think we should have anything, hopefully before the end of April, we'll be able to get proposals for cost. Uh, and then what we also intend to do is make application with ODNR for a grant for as much of this as we can get. We, we went after, we went after a grant from them for a pavilion up there at Sizzler, which got turned down, and I'm really not shocked that it did, all things considered. Uh, but we think this has a lot of viability. Uh, and we, we, we really think that we got a good shot at a grant on this, because we're also gonna do the pickleball courts. And it's, it's, so we've got, you know, the, the attraction that, for the entertainment for the young, entertainment for the old. It's the kind of thing, I think, that has a lot of magic for, for grants. Uh, so we will see, uh, what we can, what we can muster up for grants. One of the other upsides of uh, of getting out from under the financial obligation of the Tudor House is, we won't have a financial obligation for the Tudor House. And so the hundred and fifty thousand that we have coming in each year, of the portion of the income tax that has to go to parks. Uh, can now be used for some, for some other purposes. Uh, and uh, specifically, the Parks Commission, as, as I've told you, is, is committed to, to this project. Um, and so we would be dedicating a significant uh, portion of the, of the park budget. Over the next few years to, to, to get this done.
Paul, I apologize. I have another question. Would this mean an amendment to change that then for our income tax?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, 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 no. It just says it has to, that five percent has to go to parks.
Parks.
Yeah. And it says primarily for capital projects. And then if you, you can also use it for other purposes. But it's primarily for capital projects just like this. The uh, uh, the, South Summit Cog is, is meeting and proceeding and uh, May eleventh, right now is the target date. To uh, to go live with that joint venture. So uh, that's, that's moving along its course. Uh, everybody involved at this end and our safety forces and our dispatch people are all excited about that. Uh, everybody involved at this end and our safety forces and our dispatch people are all excited about that and still a hundred percent behind it. And let me see, lastly. The financial disclosure statements to the Ohio Ethics, if it didn't hit your radar, uh, May seventeenth is the deadline on that. So uh, I don't, I, I used to get a note, I don't think I got a notice this year. Uh, and anyway, I was going through an old file, I found it and Susan probably said something to us a while back, but uh. Anyway, we all got a file one, so it's due May seventeenth, that's just a reminder. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Paul, move into finance, Susan.
Just, can you hear me?
Yeah.
There we go. Um, we are this, last week and this week, the mayor and I are meeting with the department heads to go over the annual appropriations. Uh, we've got one more meeting tomorrow and then once uh, we get everybody's numbers. By Friday, you should have your um, spreadsheet with the draft uh, draft appropriations on it. And then as soon as that, as soon as you have a copy of that, I will make it into the form, form of a resolution. So if you have any questions, once you receive that in your email, please look it over. And let me know if there's any questions or if you wanna talk to that, the department heads as well. Um, since they're the ones that are in on the meeting with us and, and go through everything line by line, uh, feel free. But if you have any questions, please let us know. Um, if you'd rather have a, a hard copy. Um, you will get a hard copy of the resolution, of course, but if you'd rather have a hard copy of the spreadsheet, let me know, we can print that out and put it in your. Uh, folder back there too, whichever you'd prefer. That's all I've got for right now.
All right, thank you, Susan. Old business, any old business?
I wanted to bring up about um, digital, getting our ordinances put in online. If, what kind of work's been done on that or if we were still doing that?
That is still, I apologize for my background. That's still on the radar. Uh, and I don't mean to keep putting it off, I mean, we haven't forgotten about it. It's. In, in, to, to be, it's, it's probably a next year project, to be, to be honest with you, Mr. Federman. But when I say that, I mean it. Uh, you know, I think we'll, we'll have, the deck should be cleared enough that we can get at that. Kind of somewhat similar to that is, is trying to go digital with all of our paper records. And if you've been in that back room, you see what a nightmare that is with everything that we store with paper and it's gonna take a lot of work to get ready. So those are two different projects, but, but uh, they're sort of under the, in my mind, it's the same thing. If, if we can get at it sooner this fall, we certainly will. Uh, uh, and um, and as we mentioned before. Uh, I haven't, I don't know, I can't, I don't know the specific sites, but it's been suggested that there might be uh, some, potentially some grant money available. Uh, for that type of thing, there was some suggestion, maybe you could use CARES money, but I thought that was a little bit of a long shot. Uh, but uh, uh, so I know that we need it. A- and i- we need our, we need to. We need a code. Uh, we should have a traffic code, we should have a criminal code, we will have that. Uh, we just, I just haven't been able to get at it yet.
Thank you.
Any other old business?
A couple of things, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, you mentioned pickleball, when will the pickleball court open up at Lakeside?
Boy, as soon as weather permits. And I'm looking for volunteers to do the, to do the introductory, uh, introductory game, so if you're interested. But yeah, as soon as, as soon as the weather is good, uh, we've got the paint. Uh, and we've got the posts, it's just a matter of, and the surface is there, so we just gotta stripe it and sync the posts and get the nets up and. Get it going, so uh, I, I would hope uh, right around the beginning of April.
Excellent, okay, and um, uh, the Community Involvement Group, uh, and, and Grow, Grow Park. Uh, any updates on that?
Uh, the, the, yeah, Citizens Advisory Group, we had a nice meeting. Um, and boy, I, I lose the sequence of some of these things, I, yeah, we met with them right after the last meeting that we had. And we had about twenty, twenty-two people, uh, and uh, really a, a good exchange of information. Uh, we, a, a pretty broad range of expertise. Um, and uh, what has come out of that, as much as anything, I think I copied you folks on this. Um, we, you know, we wanted to get the information out in terms of what we're doing, why we're trying to do it. And, and also part of it is, and this is a slow process and I wanted people to be aware of that as well. Uh, nothing's happening next week in terms of this, but uh, but get them in on the ground floor. Uh, and, and get input from folks. Uh, and we, we referenced the comprehensive plan, which was adopted in two thousand and four. Uh, and uh, and I, I think it still has a lot of viability because as I pointed out to them, there hasn't been a whole lot changed up here since two thousand and four. Uh, the city looks largely the way it did back then. Uh, and because we've had no infrastructure, so um. Uh, but it was suggested that it wouldn't be, this would be a good time for an update of the comprehensive plan and that was a good suggestion. So uh, I am, I've got a, a Zoom meeting next Thursday with the Pogomire Group. And those are the folks that did the comprehensive plan. Uh, and we're gonna talk with them about, you know, get some input from them about what their thoughts are. Uh, and uh, uh, what, what cost might be, and then from there. Uh, we, we will likely, I, I expect that we're gonna do a request for proposals. To not just Pogomire, but to other groups for an update of the comprehensive plan. And, and we'll come to council with that, uh, you know, once, uh, I'll probably be coming to you with that sometime in, in April. Uh, asking for this request for proposals. Because uh, I really think it would, I think it is time. Uh, I, I don't think it's gonna take a lot, but, but uh, so that, that group is up, off and running and, and they, boy, they, they got good ideas. So I think it's, it's a good group. Um, uh, as far, we did have a few people that responded, they had some interest in, in, in sharing some ideas. Uh, on Grill Park. Uh, three or four, Katie, would you say? Three, okay, we have not, I haven't gone any further with that one yet. Uh, so uh, I gotta get back to that, but I, you know, I, I did hear from their baseball folks and then we did tell them, but by all means. Use it for youth baseball, a- as you did in the past. And I also invited them to let us know whatever they might need in terms of grooming or uh, assistance from our service department, I haven't heard back from them. But uh, so I think for this year, it's just, it's still gonna be a youth baseball field and, and down the road, we'll have to see what, you know, what we might want to do out there.
All right, any other old business? Well, you got something, Jim?
Just a courtesy of saying thank you.
All right, all righty, any other old business? How about new business? Any new business? All right, we're going into our public questions and answers and actually, this is one I'm gonna bring up the email, so get yourself some popcorn and a soda. Cause this is gonna be a little while. But I do have a. There was one, it says, I may, Sue, you might know, it says Anderson Online or American Legal can handle the digital ordinance issues. Paul's shaking his head.
Yeah.
All right, and we got another one, uh, he left his campaign fifty-nine seventy-two Manchester Road, so it's been eight or nine months since it was discussed about ordinances online. But April pickleball will be open. Well, it's two different things, I'm guessing, it says the priorities, but one's a little more detailed than the other, I would say, Paul. As far as that goes, all right. Here we go. As far as the contractor registration, I was gonna kind of wait and, you know, let it go for a while till we're all together, but I'm gonna address some of these issues. Some people are, so anxious to hear some, or I'm just gonna answer some questions. I got one, it's pretty long, so I'm gonna have to reduce it a little bit for the four-minute time. The first one is gonna be, uh, this is from Robin Akey. Uh, Mr. Stock, I am writing you in regards to the comments at several city council meetings, propose legislation on the registration of contractors working in the city of New Franklin. Without its own building department, the city of New Franklin follows the guidelines, requirements and standards. As defined by the Summit County Building Department and Building Standards Department. As such contractor registration already exists and there's a link to it. Yet you feel that's the necessity to add additional registration requirements, fees, city personnel duties. To register and monitor contractors. Uh, what prompts this legislation? Uh, I was thinking about, we have a vendor's permit that we require people to have, so I, I started looking at it and I'm like, well, you know, maybe something along the lines of. Knowing who our contractors are doing business. And the next question is, who is requesting the city to register contractors, is it residents or just you? Again, I was feeling the, you know, doing some research and I'm like, well, with the vendor's permit, maybe we look into that. So I just, I thought maybe we, you know, we felt the need. Then it says, and there's a question about how many uh, new resident, new Franklin residents have filed complaints on contractors in the last several years. I talked to Barry, he has none, but I have not checked the Better Business Bureau or I did talk to the county today, but as one question, I did not ask them. And uh, during the meeting, seventeenth meeting, council, uh, you express your reason for legislation as to who is working in our community. Protect our citizens and provide a level playing field for contractors. So then we go to reason number one, seeing who's working in our community. You stated, if you work in our community, you're gonna be insured and bonded. As the term contractor applies to many workers who provide a service, your statement and. Proposed legislation should also apply to lawn care service, babysitters, CPAs, attorneys, mechanics, mask makers, et cetera, to just name a few. Where your contractor registration requirement apply to. All who provide a service or residence in your plan, in your planning to only discriminate towards construction contractors. Now I'm gonna refer back to, if we have one, it would be on the lines with the Summit County Contractor Registration types. And I'm gonna read through those real quick. Is communication wiring, low voltage alarm, security, vacuum, et cetera. Demolition, electrical, fire alarm, fire suppression. General concrete contractor, concrete excavator, home builder, roofing, siding and signs. HVAC, fireplace, kitchen hood, mechanical, hydraulic. Kitchen hood suppression, medical gas, plumbing, refrigeration, underground fire main. And other as required by the chief building official. And all those need uh, state licensing certificates except for uh, communication wiring, demolition and general contractor. Everyone else of those needs a state license. So that would answer that question. And I might look into, maybe looking into some, some of them have for companies that cut trees down, cause kind of think it's important that somebody's, you know, doing tree work at your house. Is uh, has some kind of insurance before they're cutting your trees down. Okay, and it says, you feel registering contractors will provide protection to New Franklin citizens, this is a noble ideal, idea. But will not prevent poor workmanship or performance. Well, actually, the, either does the Summit County Board, the Building Department, they don't check for workmanship. As long as it meets the state minimum requirements, it can, it'll pass. So you can have your house built and get your final inspection for your occupancy permit and it could be a terrible finished job, trim job, you have open. You know, open miters, they're not looking for that, as long as it's on, that's all that matters, so as far as. You know, prevent poor workmanship or performance, that doesn't do it, even the county doesn't do that, the performance possibly. Each citizen should be able to select a contractor of their choice who meets their desired credential, service level and expectations. As it is their choice, the citizens assume some accountability, risk and responsibility. And if you, and if something should go wrong or fail to meet the desired outcome, each citizen currently has several public and private options. Available to settle disputes and or recover damages, do you really feel the need for New Franklin to add another lever, level of bureaucracy? To a citizen's choice? Well, a citizen can pick whoever they want, they, they're contrast, and another thing, I've been doing some talking, talked to Barry, Summit County Building Inspector, even with the mayor. This would be a no-fee registration, because it never was about the money, so it would be a no-fee registration. And I'll get to that one after I give you some information about talking to the Chief Building Inspector at uh, the Summit County. So it'd be a free, a free uh, registration, so it, it wouldn't be, you know, no, no fee required. Okay, create a level playing field for contractors. If a citizen wants to deal with only insured and bonded contractor, it's their choice. Well, it's already, if, if a contractor is gonna work in Summit County, he legally has to be. Meet the Summit County requirement, which he has to be insured and bonded before he pulls a, a building permit. So that wouldn't be, had, that's already in place. If a citizen wants to select a relative, friend, neighbor, church member, or anyone of their choosing, it's their choice. The selection of a contractor is between a citizen and contractor, which becomes a working relationship between all parties. I get that, that's fine if a homeowner wants to pull their own permits and do their own work, that's no problem. But there's some contractors that'll let the homeowner pull all their permits and then do the job. And I mean, I've seen it, I've been in a lot of, I'm, I'm not a contractor, but I worked in the residential field for twelve years. And I seen where contractors have the homeowner go and pull all their permits, but they actually do the work. So that's, that's something, even the building inspector says goes on and it's hard for them to police that all the time. And it says, this legislation will be limited to pool of contractors available for citizens to select from. It will also limit the number of residents who desire to make extra income to support their families, why do you want to turn New Franklin into a punitive city? It is not, it's not the government's role to establish a level playing field for businesses. I have a couple of points on that, this isn't about the handyman or the neighbor kid that's painting your fence, it's about an actual contractor. And as far as a level playing field as a city, we do that already with other businesses, we have an income tax. So if business A and business B sell the same product. But we go ahead and let business A not play, pay any city income tax, of course, they can have a cheaper product, so why would you go to B? So we, that level playing field is, that's something that's already in place with all, all over the country. That's how they level playing field, a lot of different things, by having some kind of requirements that everybody has to follow, which makes it level. So that, I addressed that there. And it says, Mr. Stock is a contractor yourself, it is inappropriate and a conflict of interest for you to establish requirements for registering contractors in New Franklin. I'm not a contractor, I've never been a contractor, I've been a carpenter for over thirty-five years. Twelve of that in the residential and the last almost twenty-four years as a commercial, that I work for somebody, I'm a union carpenter. I am not a contractor, this would not affect me one bit. So this proposed legislation is another example of government overreach by controlling the number of contractors available to New Franklin residents. Under the disguise of protection. No, because they already have to register with the county to pull bill, building permits, so they have to already prove that they're insured and bonded. Oh, so, and then she don't, and another thing that I did some research. And the difference, it's around thirty percent of a contractor that pays his licenses, not his license, but pays his insurance, pays his workman's comp. Pays his insurance to his employees and is bonded, is about a thirty percent difference between him and the guy that's just paying his workers as. Subcontractors, that's not licensed, or not licensed, but not uh, paying uh, insurance or is bonded. So that, that's a unlevel playing field right there, so the guy doing it right's been, at some points have been against guys that are, can go thirty percent less than him. And that might save the, the homeowner some money, but he ain't doing it thirty percent less, he's doing it for twenty-five percent less and pocketing that money. So that addresses that letter, how's everybody doing? We bored yet? Cause I'm gonna get through this. All right, so that's one. We got one here from uh, Mark Sedlock. As a small business owner in a community, I'd like to offer my opinion on the idea of a contractor registration ordinance, while my business would not be affected. I can offer some insight from my perspective as a business owner and fiscal conservative. Please pass these comments on during the next city council meeting. Why I understand desire of part of the elected officials to protect their citizens from unscrupulous, unscrupulous operators. I feel there are better ways of doing so than another tax, which is what a registration fee is, most small business operate on a very tight margin. And then another tax burden on them is neither appropriate nor justified to me as a taxpayer. Again, I would propose that there is no fee and I've talked to Barry, for what he would do, maybe up to eighty of them a year. That would not be a problem to fill out a small form to register our contractors with no fee. Having a contractor registration system also implies that the city will be responsible for vetting those contractors and ultimately responsible for the conduct of that registered. I do not believe that to be true from my research with other communities, it's not, we're not, all we're saying is, they have presented us with their insurance and a bond. That's it. As a double-hit taxpayers in the city, I pay both personal and business tax. I don't like the idea of an ordinance that puts the tax revenue collected from me in potential jeopardy from legal suits brought by consumers harmed by registered contractors. And there is, in my, there is no indication that that would ever happen from the research I've done, but I will check again with our law director. Moving on. There's a time-honored adage. Caviet emptor, Latin for let the buyer beware. It should be up to the individual looking to hire a contractor to vet, verify whether that contractor is bonded and or has sufficient insurance to cover any losses. Caused by the contractor, they should also ask for references. Previous customers and follow-up by contacting those references, a phone call or web. Previous customers and follow up by contacting those references. A phone call or website check with a Better Business Bureau can always identify those. Well, I'm sure we all understand there's always a scam going on. And we have an older population, and there are some of them that don't have access to that. My mom actually called me today and says, I'll be getting it. I will get an email because she signed up for something that somebody solicited her on the phone. She's eighty-five. I gotta, I mean, I gotta look into it, but there's some of them, they can just talk to them and they'll say, oh, okay, you know, yeah, let's do this. If the issue here is residents calling the city for contractor recommendations, which is not the fact. Then a quick response of a previous caution should suffice along with an explanation. That the city cannot recommend vendors for legal reasons. It would be not, it would not be a recommendation. An additional suggestion that in a small community, word of mouth advertising carries a lot of weight and that there are many online services that identify contractors for all type of work. Again, it's not a recommendation. It's just a registration. And we all know that there's a, a large population that don't have access to the computers, don't use the computers. So. That's one thing. The individual does not need the government to look out for them. This only leads to bigger and bigger government. With its intending and increased demand for revenue and a larger and larger tax burden on individuals. I don't believe that that's the case either. That's fine for most people, but like I said, there's always some scams and there's, there's government offices that help people from that. And if everybody was honest, you know, we got speed limit signs, we wouldn't need anybody and enforce any of our laws. Because everybody just is that honest, but there's contractors that are not that honest. So, I mean, if the government determines that it wants to assess and protecting its constituents from unscrupulous contractors. Then maybe it should do so via a public information campaign mailing, bulk mail or advisory statement. All right, I hope I answered them questions. Does anybody have any questions for me? At this point. All right, we're getting into one more. Let me get a drink of coffee here. Okay, and this is from Kevin Powell Swagert Road. I'm gonna go through some of his. His is very long. He's got a section that I will ask that I'm not gonna take care of at this point, but I will answer all his questions. All right, in, in reference to some of your comments addressing potential contractor registration during the new business section of the council meeting that took place on two seventeen twenty-one, I felt some clarification was needed regarding correspondence I sent from the meeting. Two-three further, I want to address some of the misinformation you may have been given. During the meeting, you referenced my letter around fifty-six minutes into the meeting, and I got the impression that your comments. You thought the term skilled trade only referred to state caliber licensing. My text from the letter reads as file notes for the places I have registered, such as Summit County, Barbington, Stark County. Portage County, Stowe, etc. The purpose of registering is the skilled trades to have their work inspected. This is especially important for the trades that require state licensing. This comment has two separate statements and was diff, differing. Between non-licensed and licensed skilled trades, although both are important, some require additional qualifications and requirements. I had went on to describe the insurance and bonding requirement for said licensing. You are correct in the fact general contractors were for siders and other trades do not need a state license, but. Don't think you realize all construction trades are required to be registered with the Summit County Board and Building Standards. Actually Summit County Contractor Registration Form attached it. This means that the state licensed trade, general contract, living signing, windows stars must have the same minimum insurance and bonding. In addition, they are required to pull permits and get inspections on each job they perform. This is a mechanism that protects residents and by the county having licensed qualification inspectors on staff. They have legal backing to take action against contractors. The work is not performed to standards. You mentioned if you are going to work in our community, you are to be insured and bonded. This is already a requirement of the community since Summit County standards is authority have jurisdiction if the contractor is doing work. In an area, the county building department has jurisdiction, New Franklin in parentheses. And they are not registered contractors and do not have insurance and bond. They are working illegally and would face fines and penalties. As someone that does not, does follow the rules and registers when, where needed, I agree, it would be nice to have a level playing field, but if contractors are not following the county's registration rules. They would not follow. New Franklans. Realistically, all you're doing is increasing costs, how minor it is on small businesses, which will ultimately be passed on to the consumer. Customer. Okay, regarding your comment about fifty-eight minutes into the meeting, you state that if you were doing roof for a couple of days, you would not have to pay taxes. I'm sure that is exactly inaccurate. Not sure that's in accurately. Accurate statement. When doing taxes, businesses have a profit-loss front form they have to fill out for each entity. If I have a large electrical job and I profit three thousand in two days, you're saying New Franklin would not want their share. Uh, the taxes due. If, if this is true, who do I contact for my refund? And Sue, I talked to you about that today. Can you brief on that? And I'll, I'll, I'll just while we're there, can you just give a brief summary on how that works as far as the taxes and that real quick?
We're talking, can you hear? When we were talking, we were talking about, uh, the workers and, and workers that come into the city. And, um, after, after twenty, twenty days, the twenty-first day is when we start, uh. Taking income tax from them for the workers there, but, but unless we know that these people are there. Um, you know, that Rita knows that they're there. Obviously, we're not going to be able to tax them. Um, some businesses, of course, are honest, some not so much, but, um. As the mayor can attest to, when they were putting in the pipeline, we checked, he met with them and he, we made sure we gave that information to Rita so that. So that we did collect those taxes, but obviously, and I'm sure the mayor can attest to this as well. If, if we don't know about somebody that's there and we're not advised or Rita's not advised, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know. And they would not get taxed.
And like you were saying, it's easy for Rita, if you're a New Franklin resident. They see, they'll look and see you paid state tax and federal tax. And if, since we have the tax, they would kind of look in to see where you worked or where you paid your taxes. So they look into that a little bit, but if you're not a New Franklin resident. They don't, they don't do that kind of research to try to track somebody down. And like, again, it's not a big deal about that. But it is fair to say that you could work here for a few days. Ten days, and if you weren't tracked by, uh, living here and, you know, so they could see that if you lived somewhere else. They, they would have no idea you were here. So in, you know, you would not pay any tax to New Franklin City. For up to twenty days. If, and even after that, if we don't know they're there, they're there, they won't, they don't have, they have to pay the tax, but the chances is nobody would be able to track them down. Correct?
That's correct. That would, that is very high possibility.
Okay. All right. So then I'm gonna bypass this. This is getting pretty long. There's some, uh. There's a paragraph about who is contracted with Summit County Building. Who is contract, uh, who's not contracted, who's contracted. There are several communities. I didn't really look into everyone to see which ones were what. So I'm gonna bypass that. Sorry, Kevin, we're getting into this pretty long, but you could post that on your Facebook page and let the people see it. Okay, here we go. In closing, I understand what your intentions are and what you're trying to accomplish. I also believe that you have the best intentions at heart. Personally, if there is another registration to deal with, it's just a matter of filling out paperwork and paying the fee. I do, however, disagree with the additional insurance and bonding, which there would be no additional assurance bonding. It was just proved that you carry what you're carrying for the county. That's all, that's no, nothing additional. And I think you're setting yourself up for legal issues down the road. I would appreciate if you answer the following questions, some of which are from last email. Okay, here we go. And like I said, the legal issues, I'll have to check with ours, but all the ones I've been checking into. There, there, it doesn't seem that there's no legal issue to, for you to have, if somebody calls and says, is this contractor registered? You look and say. And Barry says it's, it's very easy to accomplish. You have somebody calls, he just looks at on their computer and says, yes, they're registered. It'll be a free registration. So it's, here's the first question. You have mentioned you are not trying to reinvent the wheel and it's to protect the residents, but the wheel already exists. What further protections are you offering that the county does not already have in place? They require registration, insurance, bonding. They also require permits and inspection. Well, I had a nice discussion with Chris Randles. The chief building and, uh. Chief Building Official with the county of Summit. We talked, you know, I told him I was looking into doing like a separate. Contractor registration and he, you know, he realized Akron has it. And there, you know, they use the Summit County Building Department, and I'm sure Akron has a building department, but they use it. And one of the discussions was, you know, I told him that I talked to some people, which would be, you know, I ran it by. Uh, Paul and Barry about not even having a fee. And he said that he, he thinks that's, you know, good, because he don't believe that Akron, they have a fee. He thinks since they paid the county fee, they, you know, shouldn't have another fee. So I would decide that that would go to the wayside. I wasn't worried about that. So and what he had to say about it was. You know, he didn't have a problem at all. As long as we were not trying to enforce a building code. To him, it was a good idea because it's more boots on the ground. He said, there's a lot of, he knows that there's jobs going on that they, they don't get to. Summit County is a big area. And he don't have a problem. And then Barry and him do that. And I talked to Barry and I was. I knew that we kind of did some stuff, but Barry said, you know, our building enforcers, zoning enforcer is on the road almost eight hours a week. And he will stop it if he sees something going on, if this, not even if it's a call, he stops and checks on it. So what I was telling, you know, Barry was talking, I'm like, well, if we have a building, so what happens is our building, our zoning. Enforcer will call Barry and say, hey, this address so-and-so, Barry gets right, punches it in on his computer and it comes up that they are. Have a zoning permit and a building permit. Okay? And he said all he would have to do, and Barry's in favor too, all you'd have to do is put another column in there that says, yeah, they're registered. So and actually, when this, when he's driving around, Bill's driving around, he calls Barry, Barry goes, yeah, they got all the Xs. So he just moves on. So that's, that's one thing. That Barry said would be good for him. He don't have a problem with, you know, writing it. We'll get into that. He says he does. About average, a hundred and fifty permits a year, about sixty percent of those are contractors and the other forty percent are homeowners. So he said maybe about eighty contractors that actually pull permits. So he would have to write eighty and it would be a simple form, you know, just to put us on there. So right now, we're not costing anybody any money. We're not even gonna charge us a small fee, because even if you charge a small fee, it would be for a whole year. So say it was twenty-five dollars. If you did twenty-five jobs, you would have to charge each person a dollar more to recoup your money. So I don't even think that's an issue, but I would go with no, no fee whatsoever. So as far as that goes. The Summit County Building Inspector has no problem with us, if we had our own registration. And then it said, since we've had, heard numerous times about the limited staffing, who will enforce the, said registrations. Again. Barry said, there is no extra manpower needed. He does the office stuff. Our zoning would just be doing what he does on an average of eight hours. Now, he said, once we get into the spring, he'll be on the road more often because there's more activity once the weather gets nice. So as far as that goes enforcing it, and plus, we always have the, the residents. Barry says if somebody's building a fence, usually gets a call right away. Somebody's saying, hey, they're building a fence. Do they have a permit, you know? So a lot of that's from our residents. So we're gonna have that's, we're not gonna have somebody, have to hire somebody special to take care of that. We already have people in place. And how will it be funded? Again, very, no extra hours, no extra time. So there's no extra funds needed. Uh, what will new, will New Franklin stop using, utilizing Summit County Building Standards and open their own building department? Absolutely not. Akron, Cogga Falls, Lake Moren, others have closed their building departments and contracted with the county due to the cost of registration and permits not covering the cost of service. No. Like I, I pretty much put it all out there. I mean, it's, to me, it's something I'm still like to look into. A couple of other things with talking to, uh. A Summit County Building Official, Chief Building Official. Like people are supposed to, if, if you put a, if you get your roof tore off and get a roof put on you, you're supposed to, you don't need a zoning permit, but you need a building permit. Now, if you put all new replacement windows in your house, as long as you're not changing the openings, you don't need a building permit. So as far as that registered contractor. The Summit County don't even know they're putting windows in somebody's, uh. One of our elderly couples here in New Franklin, Summit County don't even know they're here. Okay, so they're putting windows in. They don't need a building, I don't need zoning or building. And as long as they don't change the openings, that they're under, they're just gonna go deal with that customer and that's it. Nobody knows they're here. They can come and go as they please. I would think that the actual contractors, a few that I know that do, they're by the books, they have no problem. They didn't even have a problem with a small fee. But just going in and saying, hey. Yeah, I'll go fill the paperwork out. I do it right. I'd rather do that. I'd rather my customer call and say, is this a registered? Uh, contractor and they just say, yeah, he is. And that's good. It's not a recommendation. We're not putting a list together. It'll be free. So. If you want to have whoever do it, and again, it's not about your neighbor is gonna come over and, you know. Fix your shutters or. You know, do some, a little bit of electrical work, you know, change some outlets in your house. I know that's probably, I shouldn't have probably said that, but because of the license for electrician, but it's never been about money. It's just been about who's working here, just like the, the vendor's permit. I mean, nobody has, nobody said nothing about the vendor's permit. You know, but now we got people that, we got people spending tens of thousands of dollars and we're not worried about who them people are. So. I hope I overdone myself. Is there any questions? No questions after all that? Any comments?
Good job.
Is anybody with me on it, or should I just throw this stuff all away?
David, let us think about it, because you answered a lot of questions tonight, and I think the public will see this differently too, after you've answered those questions.
Yeah.
I do think, honey, that you have good intentions on this. I see what you're trying to do.
It's not a money thing. It's just, and the thing is, you know, you get, and everybody, we've all been here a long time. Some of us longer than others, right, Judy and Paul? I mean, the thing is, you know, you can have something and a lot of people like it, but you never get an email about it. But if there's a few people that don't like something, you're gonna hear all about it. So. So far, I've had three people that think it's a terrible idea and nobody else. So we'll see. I'm just, I never wanted to push this through. I actually did want to wait till we could just all get together because there was some tension. But they wanted to address it tonight, so I addressed it. So I hope I gave some decent answers to it, you know? I think I answered everybody's questions, but I'm sure I didn't. And I'll get some more emails, but.
Well, and by the time you get more emails, you'll answer everything.
Yep, and I'll keep on doing it. So, oh, we got one. Does zoning hold the credentials to uphold a complaint? It's, it's basically, I would, you know, we're gonna get into it more, but it's just that they showed that they have a license, not a license, they keep on saying license, that they're insured and bonded. It's, they're gonna show us the same thing they show Summit County. It's not gonna be extra. It's just gonna be the same thing. And like I said, Chris at the building department said. He has no problem with it. As long as we're not trying to, you know, make the standards. And again, like I said. It's not about workmanship. I mean, there's, there's licensed contractors that are bonded and licensed and insured contractors that. They're not the, you know, they're not the best, just because they have it, don't mean that their work is, is high quality, you know? So it has nothing to do with the quality. It's just about who's here. Like I said, you can have windows put in. The county knows nothing about it. So we got a contractor in here. And people are paying ten, fifteen thousand for new windows throughout their house. But they're, you know, you don't know who they are, or they registered, you know? If they register with us for nothing, at least we got an idea who's here. So. All right, I'm done. Get back to the, any other, uh, oh, we got any question? I got that. That was a mouthful. All right. Paul, executive session, please say no. No? Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, on favor.
Aye.
All right, all right. Thank you. Next council meeting, March seventeenth. We'll start the committees at six. Good night, everybody.
Good night.